Okay, good evening, January eighteenth, twenty twenty four. Uh zoning Board of Appeals meeting, we call it to order six thirty one. Members present, Adam Sukloski.
David Potter.
Dave Sharp.
Laura Pontani.
All right, so we have four. And we can start with the minutes from the ten twelve twenty twenty three meeting. I'll entertain a motion to accept the minutes.
Uh I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes of uh October twelfth, is it, twenty twenty three?
Yes.
I'll second that.
Okay, uh we do a roll call, all those in favor. Dave?
Uh Dave Sharp, I, yeah.
Laura Pontani, I.
David Potter, I.
Adam Sukloski, I. Okay, uh new business, uh we'll be starting a public hearing. Deerfield Z B A uh hold a public hearing six thirty P M. January eighteenth for a special permit filed by Yankee Candle Company for property located at twenty five Greenfield Road. Uh for additional sign exceeding thirty two square feet pursuant to zoning laws, chapter one seventy nine, section three, two, two. Come on up to the chair.
Hi, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh yeah, but to to give some context, uh uh many of you may be familiar with uh Coleman sales that we've held in the past on on the property. Uh we've had warehouse sales uh specifically for Yankee Candle product uh in this annex building formerly known as uh our our fitness center. We've we've been trying something new since November, which is essentially an outlet sale for uh uh the Newell brands. Uh so not just Yankee Candle, but uh various other uh Marmot, Coleman, Sharpies, so on. Uh and we're hoping to keep this as a permanent fixture uh at at that location. Uh and as we try to sort of drive traffic there, maybe you've seen a billboard on ninety one uh kind of identifying it as a as essentially a a a separate sale that's going on. Uh we're trying to uh uh drive attention rather than people kind of wandering into the store. Uh just build awareness of where the sale is is actually happening on the property. And maybe even people driving by or uh who are arriving at the store and not aware that this is going on. Moving over to that location. So uh essentially, we've just designed a a much larger banner to sort of wrap around the north uh and west, the east facing uh portion of that building that's visible uh uh from five and ten and uh and that main entrance that we're hoping to uh to erect.
Okay, I saw the application that was submitted and um with the picture. So um any I don't have any questions. Any other members have any questions?
Um, I I have a couple of questions. Um, I'm just, it, you just said you're, it's basically gonna be a banner, so it's gonna be put up on the side of the building?
Correct, yeah, uh but uh just larger than anything else we have on the property.
And that's that's gonna be a permanent banner?
Yeah, well, uh permanent as long as that uh uh that that sale is going on, so there's no uh definitive end date. So far, it's been successful. It's it it's a relatively easy sale to execute. Uh so at this point, it may be something that that continues throughout the entire year into uh uh our busy season next year and and ongoing. Uh so at this point, there's no intention to end it.
So my, I guess my concern is um you know, that Yankee Candle property is a pretty special property. It's um got very nice sort of, you know, classic looking signage, uh destination kind of place. I don't know if you've noticed, but uh just across the line, we have a new um pot shop with some sort of Cheech and Chong signs up. I think they are, you know, the characters from something, something back in the seventies I'm not too familiar with. And I guess I would suggest that those are kind of tacky. They look a little tacky and they've got these banners that are just sort of hanging up there. Um, and I I would, I guess I'm surprised that if you're, if Yankee Candle is wanting to sort of do a permanent sign to sort of advertise the, you know, this, the sort of special warehouse sales. I I would have hoped, I guess, that it would have been a little more in keeping with your um I don't know how to say it, but just sort of uh less tacky, less tacky and and more sort of in in keeping with that other part of your property.
Okay, uh the, yeah, the banners that we we've designed are actually pretty consistent with that. We we have several uh three by ten banners as the same designers, same printers that we have in a a couple of different locations in the property. So we were sort of trying to be consistent, especially in production. Uh and it, I I can imagine maybe somewhere farther down the line, if uh this does continue to be successful, uh that we might want to look at something a little bit more, you know, wooden, freestanding. Uh, you know, this, this originally started as uh an intention to uh, hey, let's get through the uh the busy holiday season with uh with these uh big, uh, you know, seven by twenty eight, uh twenty eight banners. Uh and then, you know, somebody put the brakes on, hey, you know, you kind of like need a a variance on this. Uh, so that this has kind of grown out of what had intended to be sort of uh holiday uh signage. Uh but at the same time, now that we've had time to to look at it and design it, uh by just the graphics, we want to make sure is very basic and straightforward uh i- in terms of uh, you know, identifying it as an outlet, but also consistent with uh the other uh banners and similar signs that we already have on the property. Uh namely, that that first banner, as you pull right in the uh the main entrance, you'll see uh the same a similar kind of like design and style uh right there on your right.
Right, I get that.
Can we change your question with uh with more time and and lead time? And who knows, maybe uh six months from now, nine months from now, the way uh uh but Newell works and our design team works and so on, uh we may be coming uh or with uh again, something more freestanding, uh but in order to sort of capture, especially during the slow time uh by the uh the potential customer's attention. Uh but thi- this is kind of where we landed. So I I appreciate what what uh uh the question and I think maybe uh longer term than what we're looking at, maybe in the next uh six months to nine months, uh that that's something I can bring back to our folks at at Yankee Candle in Newell.
Yeah, cuz kind of what you've just said there, like the 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 stuff that's already up there seems pretty temporary, as you say, to drive traffic temporarily, and now you're thinking of keeping it open year round. And so you're basically just putting up a bigger sign that is of the same kind of banner style. So I guess I would I would hope that it would not be a permanent sign like that slapped onto the side of the building. Um also because it's not on a flat side, right? It's wrapping around the corner.
Yeah, yeah, and and exactly, and and to your point, like uh, you know, the original intent, as we looked at this, uh, you know, we went back and forth, is this a uh, is this a temporary sign? Is this a permanent sign? And the fact that we couldn't identify it uh an end date uh kind of turned it in during our discussions into what we're calling a permanent sign. And that doesn't mean that this is the sign that we're gonna keep, uh, you know, for uh the next again, six months, nine months, a year, year and a half. Uh, you know, we're just sort of interested in getting something uh uh something up that's consistent with uh what we already have in terms of uh graphics. Uh just a little bit larger and 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 more eye catching. Uh, so I can imagine that at some point, as we look at it and hey, this really is something that's gonna be permanent. We still don't know. Uh, you know, uh, traffic is certainly uh slowed down, not to the point where we're talking about closing it. Uh, traffic there is pretty consistent, uh but we may at some point decide that, you know, uh, you know, but in terms of labor and so on, uh, this may not be worth it. It's only worth doing, maybe during uh the holiday season. Uh, but uh, but for now, this is kind of uh our our best uh capture uh for for trying to uh get that guest during this season. And if we do continue it, uh then then we can absolutely look at maybe something, as I said, more freestanding. Uh, but the uh the the time with which uh it would take for us to to try to put something like that together, I I I don't anticipate having uh coming up with something anytime, anytime soon.
Those are my comments so far. Thanks.
Dave, did you see the picture? He has some other pictures here. I don't know if we can get them to you or?
Um, different than the one that's on the application?
Uh, well, there's a picture of the building and then there's the picture that says outlet. I just, I just wanted.
Yeah. I've got a picture of the building with the outline of what would be there and then a picture of the banner that would go there.
Yeah, okay, that's correct.
Yeah.
I have a question, Adam.
Go ahead.
I guess my question to the applicant is um if you can clarify, please, is it a permanent intention? Or is it not really a permanent intention to hang this banner?
Well, um, I guess I kind of have the same thought, Dave. And I don't think he has the answer to that question. But we could condition it that if we, if the board wanted to approve it, we could say it's approved. And we could pick a date and they could come back. And you know, you know, we we always have that option. Um, if you're looking for some type of end date or looking to revisit it, I think Dave makes a, the other Dave, Mr. Sharp, makes a great point about how tacky the yellow signs look in a neighboring community. And I think that's, you know, why people put the bylaw in that, you know, and obviously, there's some temporary signs and the building inspector has some wiggle room on you know, size and what he allows. And obviously, he felt this was big enough and possibly with no end date to require them to come see us, so.
Yeah, that's almost exactly the conversation we had. And it sounds like uh, yeah, yeah, to to your point, we absolutely appreciated that. Uh, you know, if this is a permanent, you know, it it has the look of a temporary sign, I think, is what what is what I'm hearing and and I see it sees some nodding there. Uh, so yeah, that that absolutely makes sense that, uh, you know, again, this was a uh a sign. We had hoped to have something like this up uh uh quite a while ago, but realized that we need to uh uh go uh go uh go through this, uh, go through this system. And so we were kind of like holding on to uh uh the image and the materials and, uh, you know, we know we can process this and turn it around, you know, once we work with the building and uh uh in- inspector on the final uh punching up of things uh uh pretty quickly. Uh as opposed to something that might be more permanent and uh uh more to the uh the the look that you folks would be interested in. But, you know, we're looking at three months, uh, six months be- before we might actually have something looking uh uh the the way we would want it to be uh a- and uh construction wise as well.
Thank you.
Yeah, so I appreciate that. That's a good idea that I hadn't even occurred, that uh a a permanent uh sign like this, maybe to to your point, can have a sort of like end date or a point at which we need to revisit it.
Well, I mean, you're kind of, it's one of those things like, you know, be personally I think, you know, it's a good business. We want to make sure that you know, you guys are getting the customers and, you know, it's not really affected residentially, but, you know, long term. You know, just like we did, we had a deal with Pelican sign and, you know, th- this topic will be, is reoccurring sometimes more frequently than others. And, you know, for uh for tonight, you get four of us, so you need all four of us to vote yes to to get this permit, so. Um you know, we can always entertain conditions that would satisfy the members if they would be willing to support it. So, you know, I'm open to whatever the the membership wants to do. If um, you know, and and then, you know, s- bring back to the other, you know, your other staff that if this is gonna be a permanent thing, then, you know, maybe we should invest in taking health and fitness off the building and putting up um some type of permanent signage that represents the Newell brands as an outlet center or something like that, where you can come back for for a permit specific, that's that would be different, you know. But we could, we could temporarily allow this, allow it to be picked in a date.
Yeah, do we look at a uh?
Yeah, do we look at a uh?
Yeah, um.
Thank you, Adam. Um, I'm I'm sorry if I should be more aware, but is is this um banner up now or is it uh? Is it not up now?
No, it is not. No, it is not. Yeah, we we have kind of like three bites, kind of like three bites in its place.
And 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 I'm understanding it correctly that the idea for this proposed banner is that it will wrap around and it will be um uh fully visible signage on each side, or is it a continuous signage that goes from one side around to the other side?
Yeah, it's a, yeah, it's a, it's a signage, but it's double the image, essentially.
Yeah.
Outlet and then another outlet.
So like, so like, the T won't be on the corner of the door.
Correct.
Correct.
Yeah, so each each image is actually uh closer to seven by fourteen. We're just doubling the image. To to seven.
Just, can somebody, does somebody have the measurements of what is the largest permissible?
Uh oh, if they were to, if they were, weren't together, would they would they not special permit?
I I'm not sure how to best phrase it, but but what is the typical standard? Uh beyond what size do you need to get the special permit? What are they, what's what's?
Yep, it it's over thirty two square feet. So, for example, most of our banners are three by ten, which makes them thirty square feet, which means that now is why we're here.
Mm hmm, mm hmm, okay. Okay, that's my questions. Thank you, Adam.
Hey, Laura, do you have anything?
Um, the only thing I was thinking about is if we were to put um you know, have, do it temporarily and have them come back, which I think is a really interesting idea. Um, I'm thinking about the six to nine month timeframe um that he was speaking about and I my thoughts would be maybe doing first six months of it up and then coming back um sometime in the summer to see because I worry that if it's nine months, that'll impact them because that would be um around October, November. And I wouldn't want them to have to take it down during their busiest time. So I would think more like having the banner up for six months or a year over the hall, after the holiday. Um, or do the six month and come back and discuss. Does that make sense?
Uh, I think it makes sense to condition it as a will grant the, would grant the permit with the expiration being June thirtieth. And then, you know, that gives Yankee Candle, Newell Brands time, they could come back before that.
Sure.
So if if they decide in May that they're gonna permanently do this, or, you know, they could schedule it, you know, in advance and then, you know, then that way you can handle it in June. Um and then, you know, they're good, they're approved to hang it up, you know, for the start of the fall season, if it's something temporary. Or if the board's satisfied with the temporary signs, they could, you know, we, you know, just be a short hearing like this and it wouldn't even be a hearing, it'd just be you know, part of the conditions of the permit. And if they don't meet the conditions of the permit, then they don't have it.
Yeah, okay, so we're in agreement, yeah.
Amy, does that make sense to you?
Um, yeah, I think if you condition it um with uh an end date, but yeah, you would want to revisit it. I'm I'm not sure if you'd need to have a second hearing when you revisit. Uh, but if you want to make the the condition that they need to come back in six months to see if you want to go ahead and extend this, then I think that's fine. And I can, you know, check with uh other people in town to find out if they think it needs to be a hearing.
Yeah, I would just make the wording, you know, as long as the other members are, that it would be a status review um condition before June thirtieth, twenty twenty four um to determine if any additional conditions need to be made. And if the applicant agrees to it, I think we're we're legal, you know, that the applicant agrees and that we agree. Um
Yeah. Um, why can't we just um gr- grant the special permit slash variance until June thirtieth? And then they would have to come back sometime in May or June to to you know, ask us for a more permanent arrangement.
Um, I think that that's a fine idea, too. If that's what you're on board with, I'm not against that either.
Um I I just think that gives the board a little more sort of authority that we haven't said yes to this permanent sign forever.
Yeah, I I I'm fine with that.
I mean, it may, it it'll be up for a while. We'll see whether it is in character of the neighborhood, right? I mean, we may all become so used to it that that it's fine, or it may be flapping in the wind or who knows what. Um, you know, or we may realize it, it does seem too big and out of character and not a nice sign. So that that I, that's all I would say, I just, um, all right, it's splitting hairs, but I just, it seems to sound like we should grant them, especially because there is some there's a little bit of waffling on the applicant's part about um, I don't see that a a criticizing, I'm saying it sounds like they are, the corporate is is still deciding how best they want to approach this part of their business. Um, so it's um we're just being a little bit more restrictive, I suppose, because maybe that timeline sounds a bit short to them. Um, but if in fact Laura is correct about when their busy time is, of course, we don't want to interfere with that, so let's, it sounds like June thirtieth is a good time.
Yeah, but uh June theater thirtieth is uh certainly better than, I think, uh nine months, exactly when when it would just be getting busy again.
Yeah.
All right, uh, any members of the public, Amy, want to speak that you can see?
Sorry, um, Adam, I've had my hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't know. Like, it's hard to see the microphones in front of the.
I appreciate that, yeah, no problem. Um, yeah, so um yeah, I want to express that um um, I'm not um in alignment with what I hear is the momentum right now. Um, and I I I wanted to express why.
Okay, go ahead.
I think, you know, the the applicant um has made a fair presentation. I understand their concerns and their needs and uh, you know, certainly, uh, I'm not opposed to uh supporting a thriving business in our town. But um you know, I I was able to pull up the dimensions um so that I could sort of uh speak to them specifically as a follow up that I had before. Um, the dimensions of the sign are seven by twenty eight.
Correct, yes.
Um, and what we're saying is that anything over thirty square feet requires a special permit.
At thirty two, yeah, thirty two.
Thirty two, thank you, right, right. Uh, so uh this is uh triple that size, I think about two hundred and ten square feet versus no, it's well more than that. I I write seven by twenty eight is is uh somebody wants to do the math, I just estimated it to be about two hundred square feet. Um and I I I guess I'm, you know, hearing the indecision or uncertainty of the applicant as to the duration or the viability of this uh business venture, I'm not hearing what is the compelling interest? And does it fulfill each or any of the requirements that we need to check off the list as far as our vetting of these applications? Um, we recently, as a board, entertained a similar request. Um, and we responded very differently, as I recall, that we said we wanted uh before a permanent sign was to go up, we wanted to see um a temporary replica so that we could eyeball it and they agreed and uh we appreciated it and I think it it succeeded. Uh, in this case, my question is, does this wraparound banner represent any potential permanent, real permanent sign version? If it were to succeed and you were to go forward, could you imagine? And I hear I'm addressing the applicant. I'm sorry, I don't know your first name or your last name at this point either, but anyway, um it, would this sign wrap around? Is that, is that, is, you know, are you proposing that or are you not proposing that?
Are are you talking about i- i- if we were to move on to uh yet another, what you would describe as a more permanent sign than uh than the present banner that's being?
Yeah, a truly permanent sign. When you've committed to it as a truly permanent business, could you imagine it being a wraparound?
Yeah, like just uh i- i- in terms of uh marketing and uh how we would want to uh uh to play something to to catch uh uh the attention of either the the folks driving by or the people driving into the lot and not sure where this is. It's it's the perfect location. It may not, uh, if it wasn't uh i- adhere directly uh to the building itself, I can imagine something that wasn't a wraparound, but still a sort of freestanding at at that that same corner or some, but some variation. It's a, that's, in terms of marketing, that's a a a hot piece of real estate, I think, uh i- i- in that portion of the property.
I totally understand. So a a a lot yet to be figured out. The um and and not something that you can say with any, you know, definitiveness right now, that this is, this is um, okay, so um, I guess my feeling would, I I would feel uh more comfortable with a shorter temporary timeframe that resembled more of what uh the other company did, the other applicant. They were saying they're gonna do something just like what they're hanging up and they, we all wanted to eyeball it. Um, you know, here, we don't even know if this business is going to, you know, pers- persist past X number of days or months. Wh- why, why not give a short timeframe? Um, they can consider what it looks like. Um, if they're willing to pursue this on a permanent basis, maybe they should get a permanent idea of what that sign's gonna look like and and then approach us um with that, uh, you know, maybe.
All right, I think I hear what you're saying, Dave. So we could uh maybe keep the public hearing open until the maybe before April first, or I don't know what, you know, it's almost February or March first or middle of March. And allow the applicant to hang the sign as a review as part of the public hearing like Pelican did?
That's, I'm just saying, it it, yeah, there's an equivalence there that gives us um uh continued leverage and 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 evaluation.
I'm I'm not opposed to that. I mean, is it, I mean, what do the other members think? I you're kind of, the the applicant here, Ben, Mr. Ware, is just he's got to get everybody's support to hang his sign. If one person abstains or says no or or says no, then or he can always withdraw, or he can say, let's wait until all, like, until our other members are present. Um, you know, but we could, as part of the public hearing, ask for it to be hung up and and this picking another date down the road for the public hearing to continue, I.
Yeah, I mean, I I think in all honesty and frankness, why can't they, I I don't even know what they have up now, if they have any signage now, but why can't they put up signage that conforms to the requirements and doesn't exceed and doesn't need a special permit? And why don't they draw up plans for a permanent situation if they're comfortable and confident that that's a permanent business venture, you know?
Um, but Dave, is isn't that, this is sort of a step in, this is a step in that direction of what they're trying to do, because they they have some signs up already.
Yeah.
And 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 there's some little signs.
Now, this is like an interim, next big, big sign, but they're not committed to it. This is not a design that that he's comfortable at all, saying it will, this is, you know what I'm saying? This is not a draft. This is just a let's get big and then we'll see. Let's get big, and then we'll see. I'm not sure why we ought to give a special permit to that.
Well, they, they, well. Again, and I'm, I'm sort of in a compromised position here. I think that they are trying to drive traffic, more traffic. Because they have a ton of people. Both driving by and in their parking lot, driving out. Um, who may not yet be aware of this resource there, which is a bunch of pretty well-known brands that they're trying to sell. So you're kind of, I mean. I think what, what, I guess I'm arguing for the applicant, I think they want to. Get a bigger sign up there to see whether this is a viable. More permanent, um, situation for, for them.
Correct, a- and, a- a- and if I can interject, uh, I, I think if you, to, to ask any number of, uh, people who. Uh, you know, does, uh, designs the signage, uh, who are planning, uh, the inventory, are planning on. The, uh, the ongoing existence of, of this outlet sale, uh, that as far as they're concerned. Uh, th- this is going to be a permanent, uh, uh, permanent sale in that location. And that, uh, as far as they were concerned, this is, uh, the, the, the permanent signage. What I'm sort of responding to is, uh, the sense that, uh, uh, from, from the board, that it doesn't give the feel of permanent signage. So now I, I'm trying to look ahead to sort of meet, uh, what, what you folks are, are hoping to see. Uh, assuming this continues as a permanent location, and can we get something that represents a, 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 a more permanent look? Uh, to it, uh, but as I said, walking into this meeting, uh, as far as anybody who I've, uh, conversed with. Uh, uh, their opinion was, hey, this is a, a, a sale that's going to go on, uh. Either def- uh, uh, definitely, uh. And this is the signage we wanted to commit to as the permanent signage through next year. So, uh, you know, I apologize if, if it sounds like I'm waffling, I'm, uh, uh, trying to, to respond more to the sense of the sign, uh, and your impression of it. As a not permanent sign, uh, than the fact that, uh. All discussions right now are sort of like an all in on this sale, but I can't, I, with, with, uh. I can't in good conscience say that a month from now, two months from now, we look at things and say, hey, this isn't working, we need to change direction, I just don't want to, uh. Uh, to, to commit to that.
No, I understand that, um, and, and, uh. You know, but I also understand and want to make it clear that this is not being proposed as a sketch of the design that you have in mind for the permanent one.
Correct.
Yeah.
You know, and, and I would be more comfortable. With a. With a permanent sign. Or with this proposal. You know. In the center, not on the corner. Though facing five and ten side. I'm kind of more, I mean, I, you know, I've. Instead of having them, you know, almost like connected. I, I mean, I see you're try, and I see you're trying to get the parking lot side of it, too. And I, I understand what you're trying to do, and I just, I don't want to go down the path of. Non-permanent signs. You know, non-permanent fixtures. Because. You know, or, you know, outlets and. And stuff like that, I. I wa- I want to support the proposal, I mean, I think. There's a couple of different ways to do it that requires. New brands to work with. What the best interest of the town is as the members of the zoning board. You know, kind of our gatekeepers on this signage stuff, so.
Can I just ask a clarified question, um, again, is the, is the, the sign I'm looking at, the blue sign? Are there going to be two of them, meaning one on each? Corner there, or is the full sign what we have going to be elongated and wrap around? The whole thing, in other words, is it just going to say outlet once?
No, it's going to say outlet twice, so.
So, so, okay, so what, it's going to be two separate signs, but they're just right on that corner?
Correct.
Okay, okay. So in a funny way, it's, it, it may. It's actually almost. Well, you could argue it's half as big as that two hundred and ten. Each, each sign is about a hundred something square feet, it's just that you've stuck them together, so it's one huge one.
Yeah, a- and we already have, uh, two, uh, separate, uh, uh, unconnected, uh, three by ten signs in, in those locations.
Yeah, as you kind of drive, yeah. Yeah. So, bet to your point, David, I guess I'm. Not sure, you, your shorter timetable seems more geared towards. Us kind of checking it out and making sure it's okay, as opposed to letting them run, run it for their business for a while, and then, uh. Us having a, a check in.
Well, Dave Potter wanted to, you know, go through and see. Um, you know, they provided, provided a summary of if it met the special permit criteria. In the applicant packet, right? So they, um. They filled that out, so that would be, you know, if we wanted to move forward and close the public hearing. Uh, we could go through that if no one else from the public wanted to, but if the board felt that they wanted to keep the public hearing open. For, you know, thirty, sixty, ninety days. And have them. Put up the signage. So we can make a more informed decision. That's, you know, that's basically up to our discretion, we can do it that way, or we can. Say no, they can withdraw, or we can. Do an expiration date of June thirtieth.
Uh, I, I have a, a, a question for, um. My fellow board members, uh, and, and, and. That's a clarification as to whether the, uh, material and style of this sign. Is part of the need to request a special permit? You know, uh, is, is, is.
I think it's just, it's a square footage with no end date, I think the building inspector uses his best judgment. To. Not. To treat people, businesses fairly on temporary signage and. Kind of, you know, unless they're huge, I mean, we have. And this, you know, came and it's big and it's, it should be permitted, basically because of the sign, I mean, I'm not. A fan of it, a fan of. Giant signs because, you know, I think this one with the blue and stuff doesn't look. Nearly as tacky as the ones in Wheatley, but. I think we have to be cognizant of what people are putting on buildings, size of them, square footage of them. I see where the three by tens aren't quite. Eye-catching. Enough in this situation because of the side, the distance from the road. And the size of it, I think that. That's the main reason why they're here, because they need something a little bit bigger, because it's not candles, it's something. Different, but I would hope that if they were going to put a permanent outlet and expand the business permanently there. They would make some improvements to the building, take health and fitness down, come back and see us. With a permanent design where we could help with placement where it's done in a more characteristic. Place that better is better. For, for everybody, because, you know, a lot of their brands have. Nice logos, so they could even space them out on the building and, and do some other things, so.
Okay, I, I can, I can move forward in that direction, I think it's, uh. Yeah. Something that I can, I can get behind, if you guys are thinking that the, the six month. Uh, and then they have to come back with a, with a different plan. A better thought out, something more detailed.
Well, and or, and or we were, we're reviewing it, I don't know that we're saying automatically I have to do something different.
Well, no, exactly, well, yeah, exactly, sure, yeah, they, um.
We, we will, we would review it ourselves.
But, but design wise, right, that we'd, we'd, we'd be considering something of a permanent nature. I, I would imagine, right, we're not. Well, I'd like to grant them the opportunity to keep a, a, a banner that's flapping on the side of the building.
Well, I, I don't think we, I. I think that we're calling it a banner because. I think they might have called it a banner, I'm, I'm sure it's going to be much more fixed than the, the Chichen Chong ones, but I think the applicant. In a sense, is coming to us with the idea that this. Might have been their permanent solution. So, so if that is still the case, when they come to us, we will have to make that decision whether we think that's an appropriate permanent. Yeah, okay.
Yeah, no.
Yeah, and me, and me personally, I mean, I would. Move it not together, you know, if I, if I was going to, if you were here and these were permanent signs. I would say not suck together.
A- a- and, and, uh, what, what would your preference be, uh, o- only one sign on one side of the building?
No, I mean, I think, you know, I, I'm not against it in your facing your parking lot, but in facing the road, but I. I think that you could do something a little bit more creative. I mean, I think the talent's there, I mean, they own a lot of big companies, I think. You know, we could do something a little bit more creative.
Sure.
So, um. I would make a motion to, um, grant the special permit, um, based on the applicant's. Application. With the special permit criteria. And the applicant agrees that the permit will expire on June thirtieth. Twenty twenty four as a condition. And we'll have to make arrangements with the staff to come before the board before that, or if they determine to remove the signs. Then that's fine. Does that sound good with you, Bear?
Yeah.
Good to the bo- board members.
I think that, is there a way to put a provision in there that they're not penalized if in fact the board can't? Get our act together and meet because of, you know what I mean, meeting a quorum or whatever? I mean, I'm just saying, if, if June's.
Well, it would be so that, so based on anything that we do, the enforcement agent is the building inspector.
Okay.
So, you know, Amy and him would communicate that, you know, the applicant reached out. And there was a problem on our end, so.
Okay.
Going Bob in that office, they wouldn't, they wouldn't go over there with, with, you know.
Gotcha.
Hiding signs down off the building.
Yeah, good.
Alright, so I'll repeat that again and see if we get a second, uh, make a motion to accept the special permit. Uh, as presented by Ben Ware from Yeekey Candle, um, with his permit criteria, meeting standards for the special permit. With the, um, expiration date of a condition. Of six thirty twenty twenty four, where the applicant will have to make arrangements to come before the board. On that day, before the board, before it expires.
I'll second that.
Okay, uh, Amy, just, uh, I guess procedurally, uh, you still, you had no one that wanted to speak, so we should close the public hearing.
Uh, yeah, yeah, you should close the public hearing.
Okay. So, uh, now that's in, um, I'm going to. Make a motion that we, um, close the public hearing. Okay.
I'll, can I second that motion?
Yes. All those in favor of closing the public hearing, a roll call vote, I'll start with Laura.
Aye.
Okay, Dave Sharp?
Dave Sharp, yes.
Dave Potter?
David Potter, yes.
And Adam Sokolowski, yes. Okay, so back to the, uh. Approval with conditions. Uh, is everybody, uh, in favor of that, a roll call vote, I'll start with Laura.
Laura Pontani, aye.
Okay. Dave Sharp?
Dave Sharp, aye.
Dave Potter?
David Potter, aye.
And Adam Sokolowski, aye. Alright, so, uh, reach out to Amy tomorrow, uh, on your next steps, and good luck, I would say, um. Keep, uh. You know, get them up. And we'll keep an eye on them, and hopefully, you know, it becomes either a more permanent thing, or they, they come down, so I think that's. What, what we want here in town is nice looking signs that are well done and not so temporary.
And I appreciate your time, thank you very much.
Alright, have a great night. Alright, next order of business, does anybody want to be vice chair, Dave Potter interest, is interested? Um, good with that, anybody else to vote on it, and then. See you. Or we could wait until all of our members are present, whatever works.
How many additional members do we have?
Uh, Ms. Harrington? Gabby?
Yep. Just, just the one right now, so it's five of us?
Yeah, there's a open alternate spot.
Um, yeah, I mean, I'm good either way, if we, if anybody wants to talk about it, discuss it, but, but if people want to vote on it.
Yeah, I, I'll make a motion to, uh, have Dave Potter be vice chair.
Second that.
Any, Laura?
I'm sorry, say it again.
Any discussion, Laura, or you want to vote for it, or?
Yeah, um, I, I'm fine with that, that works.
Okay, so Laura's in favor?
Yeah.
Uh, Dave Sharp?
Dave Sharp, yes.
Adam Sokolowski, yes, Dave, do you want to vote for yourself for the minutes?
Uh, what if I recuse?
Yeah, right, that's mine, I'm saying.
I'm about all abstain, yeah.
Amy, it, I know it just came to light today, so it wasn't anticipated, uh, more than forty eight hours ahead, do, can people do that joint meeting with the planning board?
Um, yeah, so I was going to ask, let's see, I had, um, I know there's one person who can't come, I'm trying to, I had to have to look at my. Email, but, uh, the people present, so we'd need four people minimum, is that correct?
Yes.
Adam, you can be there, um, David Sharp, can you attend the meeting on, uh?
Yeah, I sent you an email, as long as finance committee ends on time, I'll, I'll be there.
Okay, and David Potter?
Also, yeah.
Yeah, I, I was, I'm unable to attend Monday night meetings.
Okay, yeah, that's what I'm remembering, so I guess we're, I think, did Gabby, hold on, I'm just going to take a look at my email. I think Gabby said she can be there, so. Um, yeah, you would have a quorum, it just. It, it's nice to be able to combine the whole thing, because then the applicant only has to present once, and you can get it all over with at the same time, um. If you guys are good with that, I, I have to get this into the paper by tomorrow morning at nine AM for it to actually happen, so. Um, if you guys can commit, and Gabby says yes, then we can go ahead and do that.
Yeah, I mean, I'm fine with it, I, um, that's one of the nights in February that I am available, later in the month, I got a bunch of stuff going on. Um, but, uh. You know, even if we don't vote on it, um, that night, and we pick another night to vote on it, um. I mean, it's pretty straightforward, so.
Okay.
Um, I would, I would like to do it with the planning board, and then the applicant can just give the presentation once, and we can have this, you know, planning board's input there, too.
Okay, yeah, as long as I can, uh, get it in the paper, and then, you know, force comes to worst, you don't have a quorum, so it's not, you know, you guys aren't part of that meeting, but. And we can schedule a separate one, but, um, yeah, well, we'll figure that you do have a quorum, and, uh, go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, well, maybe, maybe the board will appoint another alternate, too, I mean, someone, so.
Okay.
What's, what's our quorum?
I believe it's four.
And, and I'm just curious, housekeeping, why, and, and why did you say we had to have a unanimous vote on that last, or on, on that last issue?
We need two thirds.
Two thirds of the full committee, or two thirds of the quorum?
I defer it to pass, I was under the impression that you need two thirds.
Of?
Who's present.
Of who's present, okay. So, we could have done three out of four, then.
Yeah, I'll have to double check, I.
Okay, I was just curious about that.
I'll double check, because I thought when there's four, it has to be unanimous, there was. A law change, though, last, Charlie Baker did to some type on, I, maybe it's a variance, you have to have more than two thirds, does that make sense with that?
Maybe it's. Seventy five, I'm, I'm not sure, I just, I, I mean, I haven't digested all these bylaws yet, so.
Yeah.
That's because you said it, I thought you had some chapter verse, maybe the.
I, 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 I know that. There is a lot of the stuff with zonings needs two thirds, not a majority.
Yeah.
But I know they changed some of it for, to a majority.
Yeah, okay.
But I, I will double check with Amy this week.
Yeah. I'm all for consensus, but I imagine that there would be times when. We might not get anything done if we all have to agree.
Right.
Yeah.
Alright, I'll have a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Alright, second that.
Great. Thanks, Adam, have a good night.
Thank you, you too.
Thanks very much, take care, bye everyone.
Bye.
Okay, let me stop recording here.